Well, it just turned six thirty. I'd like to welcome everyone after a beautiful weekend of sunshine. We have a little bit of overcast today, but we're having daylight daylight meetings now. So I'd like to welcome you to the City of Warman's Regular Meeting of Council on this twenty second day of March two thousand and twenty one. I now call this meeting to order. And does anyone have any announcements? Okay, seeing none, let's move down for a motion to approve the agenda as amended. We are going to, we added a a in camera session at the end to talk about vaccine vaccine facilities. Motion, please. Counselor seat.
Thank you, Mayor Phil Chuck. I'll make the motion to approve the amended Monday, March twenty second, two thousand and twenty one Regular Meeting of Council as presented.
Secondaire. Counselor Tulley. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay. Let's go down to approval of the minutes. Motion, please. Counselor Peterson.
I'd like to make the motion to adopt the minutes for the March eighth, two thousand and twenty one Regular Meeting of Council as presented.
Secondaire. Counselor Johnson. Any questions? Or business? Hearing none. All those in favor? Carry. Let's move down. We have a public hearing here. And I need a motion. Counselor back.
Thank you, Mayor Phil Chuck. I'd like to make the motion that the regular meeting of council be recessed to hold the public hearing on proposed bylaw two thousand and twenty one dash zero three. A bylaw to amend by law twenty eighteen dash zero six, known as the zoning by law.
I declare the public hearing concerning proposed bylaw two thousand and twenty one oh three open. Is there anyone out there that would like to speak to it, or did we receive anything, Major Toth?
Mayor Phil Chuck, the planning and development department did not receive any concerns or questions regarding this bylaw.
Okay.
I'm.
Yes.
Sorry, I just wanted to make sure there was a vote on that motion to.
To open it. Sorry. All those in favor? Carry. Thank you. Now the meeting is really open. Okay, well, a motion to close. Counsel Peterson.
Like to make the motion that the public hearing be closed and that the regular meeting of council be reconvened.
Secondaire. Counsel Johnson. All those in favor? Carried. Okay, so that is now closed and we're moving on. We'll move down to administration reports. We'll start with our finance manager, Manager Rosenthal Hebert.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have one item for Council's consideration tonight, which is the tenure capital plan. Administration has prepared a tenure capital plan, complete with funding as attached to Appendix A. It is important to note that in order to maintain current service levels, an increase in taxes is required to fund the equipment reserve. An alternative to this increase would be to reassess current service levels and determine necessities based on the needs of a community. Administration has prepared a plan utilizing a two percent tax increase beginning in two thousand and twenty two to fund the equipment reserve. The department managers worked hard to create a capital plan as lean as possible while continuing to maintain current service levels. Please note that this tenure capital plan is not binding, but rather a projection of possible future needs. Administration with presentation of the capital budget for the subsequent year each fall will continue to present a prioritized capital budget in conjunction with the operating budget for Council's approval. In addition, the tenure capital plan will continue to be reviewed and updated annually. Please note within this plan are a few different priorities. These are just summaries of some of the larger capital purchases. Providing for recommendations is outlined in the facilities review. Lift station number three rebuild and lift station number one rebuild, maintaining and additions to recreation. Transportation priorities, fire safety additions, and maintaining equipment for transportation and recreation departments. As you can see throughout the capital plan document, the column internal loan means we are using reserve funds from other reserves to fund capital items. We then work to rebuild these reserves over time. Administration requests that council accept this tenure capital plan as a plan, subject to change as council directed priorities and the needs of a community change. The recommendation I have for council tonight is that the two thousand and twenty one to twenty thirty one tenure capital plan be adopted at this regular meeting of council.
Motion, please. Counselor back.
Thank you, Mayor Phil Chuck. So I'd like to make the motion that council adopt the two thousand and twenty one dash twenty, pardon me, the two thousand and twenty one to twenty thirty one tenure capital plan as presented.
Secondaire. Counsel Ramich. Questions? Counselor back.
Yeah, well, this year I'd certainly, you know, just like to make a comment that obviously with this year we are, we are certainly, you know, passing, you know, you know, let's say like this tenure capital plan. As, you know, this is certainly important for managers and also for government relations to, you know, to have this information. And, you know, you know, just certainly recognizing the fact that we haven't had our strat plan yet, but this year, you know, that that will be coming. And in that there could certainly present, you know, some changes, especially over over the tenure capital plan. So, you know, I just wanted to, you know, to emphasize that particular point, you know, that that is still a possibility, depending on what develops from our, from our first strat plan meeting with with this session. With this session of council.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Counsel Ramich.
Thank you very much, Mayor Phil Chuck, and thank you to administration and the staff for getting this put together. I've gone back and forth on this quite a bit in terms of how I think I can best approach this. And going through the council handbook, I came across something in there that that sums up where I'm at on this. That's the path to a good decision does not always follow a straight line. So I recognize that we asked administration to come back to us with this plan for the end of March. And with that information at the time, that was the decision that that I certainly held. I think there's been a lot of excellent work put into the capital plan, but through that. I'm, I think we need to have more discussion, and so I wouldn't feel comfortable approving the plan at this point. Until we can, until we can have those discussions as part of the strategic plan. But there's certainly a lot of work that's been put into it and certainly appreciate all the efforts from administration. I think we just need to have some more discussion.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Now, that was, as you said, that was a proposal brought forward to council about a month ago that we defeated. And so now we are where we are, and we'll see what happens to this motion. We can make a decision based on that. Other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, I'll call the question then. All those in favor of of the motion? Opposed? Carried. Okay, we'll move down. To planning.
Thank you, Mayor Phil Chuck, members of council. Three items for discussion tonight. The first is related to the public hearing which council held at the start of this meeting. The Planning and Development Act requires any subdivision to have both legal and physical access. This means that anytime there's a subdivision, the parcel being subdivided must have a connection to a public street. In a lot of situations, due to the configuration of the site and the makeup of different parcels and ownership, this becomes quite difficult and can really fragment a site quickly. Administration is recommending, in addition to the definition of frontage in the zoning by law, that would be adding in, in the case of an irregular, non rectangular lot. The frontage shall be the mean of the front lot line and rear lot line. An example was provided for council's information. This, this bylaw did advertise for two consecutive weeks in the local paper. No questions or comments were received. So the recommendation from administration tonight is that council follow through with second and third reading.
Okay, motion for second reading? Counselor seat.
If the motion of bylaw two thousand and twenty one dash all three be read a second time.
Secondaire. Counselor back. Any comments? Questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor? Carried. And third reading? Counselor back.
Thank you, Mayor Phil Chuck. I'd like to make the motion that bylaw two thousand and twenty one dash zero three, a bylaw to amend by law twenty eighteen zero six, known as the zoning by law. Be read a third time and passed, and that by law two thousand and twenty one dash zero three be adopted, sealed, and signed by mayor and city clerk.
Secondaire. Counsel Ramich. Any final questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor? Carried.
Thank you. The second item for discussion tonight is animal control law by law amendment by law two thousand and twenty one dash zero four. We are currently reviewing and adjusting bylaws based on best practice and to rectify issues which administration is experiencing in the field. Our bylaw officers, along with community planning, have been working on updates to our animal control by law. For the most part, these additions, these are additions and do not necessarily change practice, however, make them more straightforward within the policy. The additions include no new provisions for animals and vehicles, new provisions about the off leash dog park, including when you can remove leash and responsibility for dog to ensure you can manage the dog and be in control at all times. New provisions for animals in pound, in the pound, new provisions for dangerous animals, and new fee penalties for different infractions related to animal control. A copy of this bylaw showing all the additions has been attached as appendix B. Administration is recommending that this bylaw be read for a first time tonight. There's no required advertising, however, we will do some communication via our social media and website and bring this back for second and third reading in April.
Okay, motion? For first reading, Counsel Tulley.
I will make the motion that council by law two thousand and twenty one dash zero four first reading with the intent to have a second and third reading at the regular meeting of council on April twelfth, two thousand and twenty one.
Secondaire. Counsel Johnson. Any questions or comments? Counselor seat.
Just one quick question for Manager Toss. Under, I guess, section one of it where it authorizes bylaw or amends bylaw or animal control specifically to enter a vehicle under certain conditions, whether it be, you know, cold, hot, with an animal that is visibly in distress. Does this, or is the intent of this amendment to allow bylaw officers to forcibly enter a vehicle?
Yeah, so this would be in the case, and, you know, there's been examples of it in the news, I guess, where, you know, they may come upon an animal or be made aware of an animal that is either in a vehicle, like you said, kind of during peak summertime. Or during very cold times where the animal seems like they are in distress. This is basically just saying that that bylaw officer has the ability to enter that vehicle to remove the animal for its own safety.
Right. Would there be any consideration or is there other bylaws that specifically mention the authorization to forcibly enter it? Obviously, we're talking about, you know, breaking a window or something here, and my concern is, is that it can be interpreted by somebody that has had this happen to, that the bylaw officer does not have the right to forcibly enter the vehicle, but just to enter it. Again, I know it's a bit of a play on words, but I just wanted to see if this mirrors other bylaws in, you know, jurisdictions close to us.
Yeah, I don't have the comparison right in front of me, but I do know there was a couple of other bylaws with this provision in. It's definitely information that I can provide to you now between kind of first and second reading. I just don't have it in front of me right now, but I do know there was examples of a similar clause in, I want to say it was Saskatoon or Regina, but I don't want to be quoted until I confirm that.
No, I can appreciate that. I was just more curious about the legal, you know, and risk exposure on it, if there's nothing specifically about forcibly entering a vehicle. I'll trust that you're doing your due diligence, so thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? It's an interesting time that if you bring up a good, good point there, Counsel seat, but it's also an interesting time that we all carry cameras now. So you would probably show a distressed animal before you would ever get into a vehicle. So, so there's probably a lot more coverage that way in a different way than there used to be. So, good point, though. Anything else? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor? First reading? Carried.
Thank you. The final item for discussion tonight is the subdivision of one oh nine Steve Street in Warman. Council did approve this subdivision of one oh nine Steve Street in Warman in two thousand and eighteen. Following council approval, any subdivision, the, following the council approval, excuse me, of any subdivision, the approval is sent to the province for endorsement. Once provincial approval has been given, the developer has one year to raise title, although they can request a second year. The owner developer of this lot did not end up registering the subdivision within the two year time limit, causing the approvals to expire. This means we require a new resolution from council. Nothing has changed in regards to the subdivision, and it still meets all requirements of the City of Warman zoning by law. The recommendation tonight is that council pass the motion approving the subdivision.
Motion? Counselor seat.
Make the motion to council pass a resolution approving the subdivision of part of lot one, block three, plan number one zero two two five four three oh seven, northeast of quarter section twenty five, township thirty eight, range five west of the third meridian, one hundred and nine Steve Street.
Secondaire. Counsel Peterson. Questions or comments? Counselor back.
Yeah, I just wanted to, just to make sure that I have some clarification coming from from Manager Toth on this. When this year, so the city doesn't have to have to do anything different than whatnot, but I believe that there is an added condition that the property owner needs to add a curb stop. And I think that that's fairly standard with building development, but, you know, with this, I just wanted to, you know, to note that that is a responsibility. You know, you know, that will be different from this time around versus the time that it's been approved previously.
Correct. That will be a requirement of the developer at their own cost, utilizing City of Warman approved contractors.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor? Carried.
Thank you.
Move down to recreational manager.
Good evening, Mayor Phil Chuck, members of council. I have one item for your approval for tonight. That is the P and levy schedule from two thousand and twenty two to two thousand and twenty five. It comes as a recommendation from the Recreation Advisory Committee from their Zoom meeting on February twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty one. You have both documents, the meeting minutes from the Rec Advisory Committee and the proposed schedule.
Looking for a motion? Counsel Tulley.
I will make the motion that council approve the fees and the levy schedule for two thousand and twenty two to two thousand and twenty five.
Secondaire. Counsel Peterson. Questions or comments? Counselor back.
Paul, just to, you know, just to, let's say, just to clarify, you know, with this year, certainly for two thousand and twenty one and let's say two thousand and twenty two, those would probably be pretty close to what we're accurately, you know, let's say, kind of projecting out. If there are, let's say, let's say, changes required for for any period past that, with this year, like, we still have the opportunity to make, to make changes, let's say, to this annually. Is that, is that fair to say?
That is correct. You can make, we can make check changes. I'll probably come with a recommendation if we find out that some user group is using more time and we show that we're showing more of a deficit than a, than a break even or hitting our cost recoveries. We can certainly make those changes at any point in time. We like to do, the reason we like to do multiple years is to allow our user groups to plan at least a couple of years in advance.
Yeah, perfect. Excellent. Thank you so much for that.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Counsel seat.
Just a quick comment related to Paul, but unrelated to the fees and levy schedule. I just wanted to point out that early Friday morning, I was approached by a resident and also passed on some concerns to Paul and his team regarding some cracking in the pathway along Crystal Springs Park, if you will. And was absolutely stunned to not only get an email from, or a message from Paul saying that Calvin was already on top of it. But got a picture today from Paul and also was contacted by the resident thanking us that the pathway had already been fixed. To have a turnaround of really three quarters of a working day is admirable. And I just wanted to pass it on to you, Paul, and if you could please pass it on to your crew as well, because that that's service that nobody else is touching that service. So it's greatly appreciated by the, by the neighborhood.
Perfect. Thank you very much. We always say we can't fix it unless we know it's broken. So our residents communicating with us, that's, that's top notch. That's what we want to hear.
And, and I, and I had a chance to see that crack, and it was big enough for a tire to fit in, so great job with that.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. Call question. All those in favor? Carried. Okay, we'll move down to file admin reports. Counsel Peterson.
I'd like to make the motion to file the administration reports for March twenty second, two thousand and twenty one as presented.
Secondaire. Counsel Johnson. Any comments? Seeing none. All those in favor? Carried. Okay, we'll move down to council and committee reports. We'll start with my report. And we're just, as you can see, I'm doing a lot of sharing of some of the great work bylaws doing of catching people, catching people in the act of helping clean up our city. And I, I had a lot of great responses, and some of the phone calls have turned into very positive ones, maybe even started out negative, but turned out to be very positive ones. And a little bit quieter of a week, but a chance for me to talk to different businesses and get out in the community a little bit more with this great weather. Always, always people having generally great comments about our city, talking about the growth of our city and just even some of the, the lack of real estate right now within our city. So that, that's exciting. When we were going into a building season where there's a shortage, we know there's going to be some building happening on too. The one I do want to mention too, just very happy with all council getting their newsletter in on time. And it was interesting this week to go into next year's, our next week's Gazette, or coming up the Gazette right now. Like, it was in on Monday, which gave Aaron a lot of extra time and, and to making sure that we present well. It's a great chance for you to share what's happening in your areas of leadership and given a chance for our community to get to know you. Because I think that was one of the things that was really a goal with our newspaper this year was that we, we, we have a chance to get to know our council in a better way. The upcoming events, the only one I want to mention, we have a strategic planning, but please do the preliminary survey, and I, I put March thirty first, I think it's April first that we actually have. But to find some time, I put it, put it in my calendar to go through and do that. I want a little bit more time have through, through a few meetings. I've jot down a couple of things, but if you want the phone call or whatever else it might be, the options that are there, please do it. Because that's, that was one of those things that she was very flexible about providing preliminary information before our strategic planning, so we can stay focused that day. Any questions or comments about my report? Okay, Julian. Do you, are you on?
Uh, yes. Yep.
There you are.
Just trying to get my camera to work.
Okay.
Um, I don't think I have anything to add to this. I was recently approached by the Grad Committee of Warman, just some questions and stuff, but I don't have anything prepared for that. So that'll be maybe something I bring up next week or something like that. Yeah.
That'd be great. And then, and I think that this is a good forum to, if you get information or if you give us preliminary on the grad, what's happening in that area, and maybe any sort of request to the community would be, that'd be great.
Yeah, yeah, I'll update you guys when, when I know more.
Okay, and I know that everything's so preliminary right now, and it depends on a lot of things happening from vaccines all the way through to, to some of the regulations. Any questions or comments for Julian? Counsel Johnson. Then back.
Hi, Julian. I'm just checking in to see how you guys are doing in the building and how engagement is and how you're dealing with the online and not being able to see classmates as much. Are you staying fairly positive, or are you with the nice weather, the spirits up higher?
I think, I think people are doing better now. It's, it's definitely a lot, like, a lot easier to deal with stuff when it's not all doom and gloom outside and minus fifty. I, I know I've had a few people talk to me about how they're struggling a little bit with, you know, not being around people every day and whatnot. But those same people, I've also noticed lots of people like study together on their days out of school and whatnot, and that sort of helps. Just sort of keeping the sense of. I don't know, just having people around sort of takes this, takes the stress off.
Awesome. Chin up, kiddo. You're only a little bit to go, hey?
That's right.
Thank you. Counsel back.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor Phil Chuck. Julian, I just wanted to, you know, you know, just to comment, you know, with this, it was certainly good to see that, you know, you know, that, that the graduation conversation has, has started. You know, certainly last year, you know, you know, certainly with, with that being like the first year of COVID. You know, when it did come down to to graduation, you know, I think it was really tough for, you know, for some of the parents to actually kind of coordinate some of the, some of the graduation plans. And that actually kind of fell onto the responsibilities of council to, you know, to certainly make sure that we could allow for the parade and things like that. So it's certainly, you know, so I just want to compliment you on, on certainly bringing that there forward, you know, just so that we're there, you know, I'm like, at least that, that conversation is already happening. So while we're, you know, you know, still, you know, doing a lot of things virtually and whatnot, certainly do your best to keep up that coordination and, and to certainly overcome some of those challenges. Because, you know, like, that's, you know, certainly a important time for, you know, for the graduates. And, and, you know, with this year, like, I know last year I felt, you know, certainly, you know, that the timeframe was, was very short for us to turn around and put some plans together. So, like I said, I'm, I'm just thankful that there's, that there's thought around this already. So thank you for that.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Great. Thank you, Julian. A motion then to file our reports? Counsel Johnson.
I'll make the motion that the mayor's report and youth council representatives' report for March twenty second, two thousand and twenty one be filed as presented.
Secondaire. Counsel back. All those in favor? Carry. Let's move around to round table. We'll start with Counsel Tulley.
Thank you, worship. Not a lot to report on this evening. We did with the library board, I was a part of the, the library's AGM, which was just last, I believe it was last Wednesday evening. And then followed by just the regular library monthly board meeting. Not a lot to report out of those. Just, it was, it was a pretty low key. I think the AGM was done in a few brief minutes, so it was, it was fairly quick. Tomorrow, I'm going to be part of the SAMA Urban Advisory Committee meeting, which is just a remote meeting where we get some updates from SAMA about some things probably going on with the revaluation this year, and just some updates in general from them. Outside of that, that's all I got. Thank you.
Counsel Ramich.
Thank you, Mayor Phil Chuck. Not too much to report this time around. I do understand that we gave an extension to the. I do understand that we gave an extension to the engineering firms for that clubhouse and first RFP. So looking forward to when those come through and continuing to move that file forward. I was glad to be able to get my first newsletter submission in. Aaron had some, some good suggestions when I asked some questions off the bat, so certainly appreciate that assistance there. Some news to report to council is I've been accepted onto the environment committee for Unisask. Unisask has opened up some committee positions outside of the board for elected members, and, and I've been chosen on the environment committee. So looking forward to, to that and, and being able to work with Counselor Beck on that as well. I think just as the, as the last thing to report on, looking up when the next census starts, and that starts in May. And I think I'd just like to put a plug in here for the importance of having all the residents fill that out accurately, as there's so many things, including funding for municipalities and another aspects that are tied to population. So I'm just putting out a, an early plug that when that census comes out, it is really important to, to the city here to have accurate numbers to work with. Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, and it looks like that's mainly going to be virtual, looking at what they were, how they were going to do it. So it'll be interesting how that plays out. Counselor Peterson.
I don't have a lot to add at this time tonight.
Counselor C.
Thank you, Mayor Phil Chuck. It's been a quieter week this week, but just a couple of points of reference. I do have a Legends Board meeting tomorrow evening, so I look forward to getting kind of an update on where the greens are and when they have a tentative soft opening. So I intend to send out a, just a quick synopsis of the meeting tomorrow night to council, just so we can all book our tea times ahead of everybody else. But we'll, we'll get it figured out. We do have obviously the strategic planning coming up, which I'm looking forward to, as well as an, a meeting regarding ambulatory care in short order as well, coming up within the next couple of weeks, so I'm definitely looking forward to that. And I'd just like to remind everybody regarding the email sent out by our new staff sergeant, just looking for our direction and our, our points of focus, these are critically important. And I, I'm very impressed so far with Staff Sergeant Thomas. He seems to be a perfect fit for us, and I really, really admire his can-do attitude. I think that he's going to take the points that we're offering to him extremely seriously, and I'm highly confident that he's going to knock it out of the park. He, he just seems to be doing a great job. So there'll be more to update, I guess, in the next week or two, and, yeah, I look forward to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, and, and that is important because we take our, our points of reference and then we'll prioritize. So we're really giving the RCMP three or four things to really focus on this year. So get those into C Manager Smith, and they'll be collated. And just a, a, a point to Counselor C too, is with the golf course, it'll be interesting where the food services are going to go. Because that, they had none last year, just where that plan's ongoing, or if you have any insight right now.
Okay, yeah, there is some, I can touch on that a little bit. There is ongoing discussions due to the fact that the restaurant was really samed last year due to, I'll call it, some extreme COVID restrictions that just really left them unable to efficiently operate that restaurant. So there's been discussions. I was not a member of the, the golf course last year and only golfed a couple of times, but there were some mentions of irregularities with regards to the food being available at certain times, and that was certainly addressed by the membership, was deemed to be a big concern. And they are actively looking for a solution. They've got a pretty, some pretty good ideas so far, and I think that we'll get a good update tomorrow. But there, by all indications as well, their membership is up. They are in an extremely sound financial position, which is refreshing. And it, you know, I, I've been a member of a lot of different groups and boards, and this is a bit of a motley crew, but they do a heck of a good job. They, they're really passionate in what they do, and they're, they're efficient. So it's, I'm really looking forward to what it can bring, and I, I think there's a lot of positivity coming in. And hopefully I can get an update tomorrow with regards to the food situation as well, but I, I, I'm confident that we'll find a good resolution.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Smith, or sorry, Counselor Smith, City Manager Smith.
Just to Counselor C in regards to, I know last year there was some concerns raised by the residents surrounding the, the golf course. There's been some documentation going back and forth from last year, just to make sure that that's on the, on the golf club's radar as well. If you need any information, we can certainly pass on what was provided last year, but just as a, a note, thanks.
No, I would definitely appreciate if that could be passed on, even just in a real quick point form sometime tomorrow, so I could have a quick chance to read over it. And I will definitely bring it up with, with the board tomorrow and see if there's any action required or any updates that they can provide.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor Philip Chuck. Just excited, like Counselor Ravich has said, to have my first newsletter submission. Kind of appreciating the first of everything in this position. I'm learning a ton. I've signed up for one conference in April with regards to the environmental aspect of my position. I was hoping to attend the, the municipalities of Saskatchewan one on the, I think it was the twenty-third that Counselor Beck had mentioned, but I've got parent-teacher interviews, so unable to do that. And then, just on a side note, I will be, I'm excited to do some basketball camps over the Easter break with the kids at the Legend Center for eight kids and a couple age groups. So it's nice to be able to get back and, and give back to the community as well. Thank you.
That's great. That's good to hear. Counselor Beck.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor Phil Chuck. So I don't have much to report on, certainly with, with business here of the city. You know, I am obviously looking forward to the strat planning session coming up, and, and also, you know, commenting to Counselor C there, certainly like the RCMP priorities. But beyond that there, I don't have much in terms of, you know, it's a local conversation. I will say tomorrow, I am actually the one hosting the environmental seminar with municipalities of Saskatchewan. So I'll tell Counselor Johnson now, I will, I will make really, really good notes for you, and I'll be sure to pass those along. So, yeah, you know, certainly tomorrow's session, like, one of the new programs being rolled out there is, is the, the, like, the battery collection here in Saskatchewan. So very much looking forward to that, because I think that's going to certainly help us in, in, in our environmental direction coming out. So, yeah, so I just thought to pass that along to Counselor Johnson, that she can rest tonight and whatnot. And just a message for Counselor C, I don't know, for all the years that I've been on council, I've never been invited to the early tea time here at the Legends. So I don't know, if you can line that up for council, that, that would be great. I've never, ever seen it, so, I'm just saying. Anyways, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move down. Thanks for all of that, and thanks for your contributions all the way through in these last couple of weeks. Let's move on to accounts. Motion, please. Counselor Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor Philip Chuck. I'll make the motion that council approve the city accounts as presented by checks numbered two four eight nine seven to two four nine nine two for the total amount of one million, two hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred and ten dollars and forty-one cents. And the payroll vouchers numbered one one nine seven zero to one two zero three eight in the amount of one hundred and three thousand, five hundred and forty-seven dollars and forty-seven cents for March twenty second, two thousand twenty-one.
Seconder. Counselor Peterson. Any questions or comments? See none, all those in favor? Carried. And a motion to go on camera? Counselor Beck.
So certainly at this time, I would like to make the motion that, that council go in, in camera, certainly to discuss the business that was presented earlier.
Seconder. Counselor Johnson. All those in favor?